Okay, my mic's on. So, good morning, everybody. This is a special meeting of the Third Board of Directors of Laguna Woods, Laguna Hills Mutual, a California nonprofit mutual benefit corporation. This is a special election town hall meeting, and I would like to acknowledge the presence of any media, Village TV, and also anyone who is attending this town hall meeting virtually. I'd like to introduce the board officers that are with me today, our Secretary Lynn Jarrett, and our Treasurer Robert Manchinik. So, and then the rest of some of the directors that are joining us virtually are Directors John Frankel, Kush Bada, Debbie Dodson, Reza Karimi, and Raft Engle. So, this morning's town hall meeting, I'd like to begin by reading the amendment, the language to, proposed language to replace Article 11, Section 1 of the CCNRs, and it reads as, "The mutual shall obtain and maintain a policy or policies of property insurance with extended all risk coverage for a reasonable insurable replacement value of insurable improvements of the common area and units of the project and related projects. For purposes of this provision, reasonable insurance replacement value shall not be required to be 100% full insurable replacement coverage if the same is deemed by the Board of Directors not to be practical or reasonably affordable for the mutual. The Board of Directors shall endeavor to make a reasonable effort, if reasonably affordable, to maintain property insurance with a valuation that is generally accepted and not prohibited by residential mortgages and secondary mortgage markets. Notwithstanding anything to the contrary contained herein, at all times, if commercially available, no matter the cost, the mutual shall maintain property insurance in an amount which is no less than two times the most current probable maximum loss." And that is the information that you will be receiving. You'll be hearing it again, and it will be in the information that you get when you receive your ballot. And again, I just would like to remind everybody, if you are attempting to call in, we are having some technical difficulties, trouble getting connected to the Internet, so please bear with us as we work through this. And in the meantime, we are going to, we have received some questions from the audience that we have answered, and we are prepared to proceed with answering some of those questions as we wait to get our Internet connection up and running. So, okay, I'll start with one of the questions that we received yesterday afternoon. That question's, "Has the Board looked at other 55-plus communities like villages in Florida to see what they are doing about insurance?" And the answer is yes. The Board has looked at other 55-plus communities. We have not looked at the villages for a number of reasons. One is the size. Two, the age and structure. Three is the location in reference to wildfires. And four is state laws that govern insurance. We have compared our situation to a community that is similar in size, age, location to potential wildfires, and also in the state of California. This other community is experiencing the same difficulties that Third Mutual is experiencing. We have been in communication with their leadership and discussed how they are addressing the issue. Another question, "Suppose the proposition to amend the existing insurance policy wins? What happens in the event of a catastrophe when the buildings are not insured to its face value?" And the answer, basically, a special assessment would be approved by the Board that each member would be responsible for paying. Who pays for the remaining costs of the repairs because the insurance company is required to only pay partially the total cost of the damage under such proposition? If the cost to rebuild exceeds the coverage, we have a special assessment, I'm sorry, if the cost is to rebuild, the cost to rebuild exceeds the coverage we have, a special assessment would be necessary. If the residents will have to pay for some of the costs of the exterior damage to their respective residents, this is going to create a big financial hardship on the individual residents. We certainly understand this, and it is the intent of this Board to purchase as much insurance as we can afford should the ballot fail. I'm sorry, should the ballot pass? Should the ballot pass? Thank you. So Director Jarrett will answer some questions.
All right, the next question we had is, "Most of us will probably not be able to afford paying for the cost of fixing the damages to the exterior of our residence that is not paid by insurance. It is not our intention to put residents in this position. Please be aware that even though the current CCNRs require 100% replacement insurance, we were unable to purchase $1.6 billion of coverage. We were only able to purchase $700 million, so technically speaking, we are currently underinsured. Again, please know that the $700 million was all that was available to purchase, even though we wanted to purchase more. Even if the amendment fails, the Board may not be able to purchase full replacement insurance next year, as was the case this year." Another question, "What should we do if our residents become uninhabitable? We strongly encourage all owners to carry an HO6 policy. If your manor, excuse me, was to become uninhabitable, you would still be responsible for the monthly HOA fee as well as whatever your cost for living somewhere else while your manor is being rebuilt. The specific component of the HO6 policy that would address this issue is the loss of use. Please speak with your insurance agent to make sure you have adequate coverage in this area." The next question, "Let me know, please, how it will work for us residents. Should the proposition to amend the existing full insurance coverage take place? The Board will still endeavor to purchase as much insurance as is reasonably affordable and available. If the amendment does pass, please know that there will still be a substantial increase in the monthly assessment, for there are all sorts of factors driving costs upward: labor, water, electricity, materials, et cetera. Also, we have to reimburse the disaster fund for the money we advanced from the fund to defray the full cost of the insurance for last year." Next question, "What about the thought of self-insurance? Well, the Board is certainly open to creative approaches to controlling our out-of-control insurance rates. Self-insurance is an idea that has been floated before and one given serious consideration. We just don't believe that we are in a financial position to underwrite self-insurance at this time. We have a fairly limited amount in reserves, and should we have a large loss, we could not cover the rebuild requirements. We would be forced in that case to have a special assessment, which we agree would be devastating to our members." Annie?
Okay.
You're next.
Okay, I'll go ahead. Another question, "In 2020, a determination of the probable maximum loss of $145 million was obtained on an evaluation of $700 million for the entire village. Because of the increased, increased construction costs experienced in 2021, what would be the current PML based on Third Mutual's evaluation of $1.6 million? The PML is only partially based on the value of the mutual. The PML represents what the maximum expected loss in any one resident is likely to be. Just because the value, the value of Third increased to $1.6 billion does not mean the PML goes up, it corresponds, goes up a corresponding amount. The PML would only increase what the cost of labor and supplies would increase to rebuild the PML of $145 million. So, if rates for labor and supply went up 10%, the PML will go up 10%. What would be Third, what would, what will the Board do if the current PML is greater than one-half of the current Third Mutual, Mutual's evaluation? Given what we have stated above, we do not think it is possible for the PML to ever be anywhere near one-half of the evaluation unless we have a totally devastating fire. A full, assuming $25,000 deductible per occurrence, what is the cost in 2022 for the following? A full replacement policy valued at $1.6 billion? At this time, we do not know this figure. We will not know until the insurance, insurance broker goes to market and obtains quotes for the available insurance, which may or may not be as much as $1.6 billion. A policy at two times current PML, quote 2021 determination? We do not, we do not have this information at this time. Again, it is dependent on what quotes the insurance broker obtains when they build the insurance tower. In the Third Board meeting on Tuesday, May 18th, it was indicated these costs were not known. How much does the new insurance broker estimate he can save Third Mutual with this change in CCNRs? We wish we had the answer to that question. The insurance brokers have never stipulated that they can save any money with changes in the CCNRs. The savings would come from the Board choosing to insure for less than the current required 100% replacement. What action will the Board take if one or more of the 59 tracks do not obtain a 67% favorable yes, yes vote on the proposed amendments? If a small number of members are holding back, the vast majority of the members, then in all likelihood, the costs will make, the courts will make the final determination. Okay.
Okay, the next question is, "Based on Third Mutual's history for the past three years, how many insurable events along with their costs occur each year, and what account or accounts will the Board use to pay the deductible for future events if the deductible is raised to $100,000 deductible per occurrence policy regardless of the insurance policy obtained? Well, I'm sorry, but I do not know the exact number of events to which you refer for the past three years. As for the $100,000 deductible, it appears we will not likely have a choice if that is the minimum the insurance companies are offering. This past year, it was not the choice of the village to go to a $25,000 deductible from the $10,000 we had the previous year. The insurance companies raised the minimum, as it appears they intend to do next year." The next question, "According to Article, that's Article 9 of the CCNRs, have the eligible...
Welcome to Zoom. Enter your meeting ID, followed by pound.
Have the eligible mortgage holders been notified of these intended changes to Third Mutual's CCNRs and our ballots being sent to all such holders? All appropriate stakeholders are included in the voting process.
You have entered the meeting as a panelist. Attendees can now hear you speak.
We apologize. We are still working out the technical difficulties, so please bear with us. Thank you.
What did he say? Are we ready? Okay. Again, the answer is, as all appropriate...
We're getting an echo now, Grant.
It's from the laptop.
Okay, I'm gonna start the question again. According to Article 9 of the CCNRs, have the eligible mortgage holders been notified of these intended changes to Third Mutual's CCNRs and our ballots being sent to all such holders? All appropriate stakeholders are included in the voting process. It is being conducted exactly as it was last year. Another question, to provide, please provide detail on what properties and common area were included in the current insurance value, value of the policy. What is the year of the policy, and specifically, how's the value of each property and common area determined? Well, last year, a company named Duffin Phelps was contracted with, to perform a complete evaluation of the whole village. When the report was written, it was divided into three parts: the property slash responsibilities of GRF, the property slash responsibilities of United, and finally, the property responsibilities of Third.
Thank you, Director Jarrett. At this time, I'd like to check with Grant to see if we have received any member questions online.
Yes, I do see that we have two members who requested to speak. I will go ahead and bring, the first one is, a member to speak is Rosemary Quinn. I will go ahead and accept her into the meeting now.
I had sent in a question that I haven't heard yet, and that was, in the recent past, United, VMS, or GRF and Third had all gone together to cover units and common elements. How will the mutual go pay towards insuring the common elements this year when purchasing insurance alone?
Director Manchinik, I'll let you speak to that.
Okay, Ms. Quinn, very simply, since GRF has total responsibility for all of the amenities, the clubhouses, the golf courses, the pools, the equestrian center, et cetera, GRF will be responsible for insuring those amenities.
All right.
Does she have a follow-up question?
Oh, I have a question. The next person is Richard, if you please say your name and manor number before speaking, please.
Good morning, Richard.
Am I on now?
Yes, yes, you are. Good morning.
Good morning. I didn't have a question, but I'm gonna ask it. I have it in my mind.
Richard, we, we, could you give us your manor number, please?
Glad to do that.
Thank you.
I read in your proposal, and I think the people should know, there's $93 a month that's going to be added to the maintenance fees for insurance. If we don't vote yes, is this a fact, or, or have you got that information secured at $93 each if it goes against the Board's draft? Is this, this is information we should know upfront? If we don't reduce the amount of insurance, are the owners gonna be charged $93 a month more? Yes or no?
Richard, in all likelihood, given... Okay, Richard, in all likelihood, we put out that $93 figure because, understand, the cost of insurance is going up. The insurance broker has already informed us this year that they expect the current cost to go up 20 to 30% just for insurance, property insurance. We also have, as we've tried to indicate to the members, that there are increased costs in water, electricity, labor is going up 2.5% in the village. The state of California has also approved a dollar an hour minimum wage raise that will impact all of us, as has the cost of everything else going up. So, the $93 per manor per month is the maximum by law that we can increase the assessment. We expect actually costs to go up even more than that, because we also have to return the $46 per manor per month that we took from the disaster fund. We're required to return that as well. So, when you add up all of the costs, the maximum it can go up is the $93. We're hoping to actually keep that lower than the $93, and we're gonna do the best we can in that regard. So, I'm sorry, it wasn't just a yes or no answer. It's dependent upon what happens with a lot of other factors that we're currently trying to adjust, but thank you for your question.
We have a, a question from Susan Smallwood submitted via the chat. I will read that for you now. It says, "For each unit sold in Third Mutual, why not work out a program to receive..." One moment, I apologize. "...to receive some of the transfer or membership fee of $5,000 at sale?"
Well, Susan, that's actually a very good thought. The problem is that that $5,000 right now goes completely to GRF and is used by GRF to keep their assessments as low as possible. I'm not sure that GRF would be willing to share any of that with us, but it may be an idea about tacking on, making it $6,000 or $7,000 is certainly a possibility, and having some of that money go directly to Third Mutual for the sale. That's something the Board can certainly talk about, and we're happy to try to think outside the box and welcome ideas from members as to how we can generate some revenue otherwise to help offset some of our costs.
We have another question through the chat box from Doris Silva. The question is, "For sales and rentals in Third, do we charge fees to those investors that are gaining profit off of our village?"
No, we currently don't, and I'm not sure that we'd be allowed to, but certainly an idea, and we can discuss it with the folks in the resale department, but the, at the moment, the answer is no, we do not.
Ms. Silva says, "Thank you for investigating."
While we're waiting, let me go ahead and answer a couple of other questions that were sent in, and if other people come in, Grant, let us know. One question we got was, "Is earthquake damage included in the policy, or is there a separate policy?" The answer is yes, we do carry an earthquake policy. It is separate. It is not part of the property insurance. Regarding, "What will the assessment be if the ballot measure passes?" It says, "I'm unable to actually give you a very firm answer on that. I can tell you, though, as I think we've said earlier in today, that there will be an increase, no matter what. Whether the ballot passes or not, there will be an increase in the, in the property assessment." Because as I think I've indicated just a moment ago, costs are going up across the Board in almost everything else. I read an article recently, just last week in fact, that said that if you were building a new single-family home of approximately 2,000 square feet today, the cost of building that home would be $36,000 more today than it was last year because of the increased price of lumber and other supplies. So, please understand, yes, with the fact that insurance is going up 20 to 30%, the fact that all the supplies are going up, even if this ballot does pass, we will see an increase in the assessment. The question is, how much that increase will be? We believe that we have a better opportunity to control that increase if we have more flexibility in what we purchase in terms of property insurance. Go ahead, put her in. She's the only one.
We have another question from Susan Smallwood. The question is, "What does the Davis Sterling require the Board to do in repayment of the disaster fund? How long do we have? What is the minimum amount to be paid?"
We can pay that disaster fund over one or two years. So, if you understand that it was approximately $46 per manor per month is what we took, if we pay it back... it was approximately $46 per manor per month is what we took, if we pay it back in one year, we would pay back then $46 per manor per month. If we pay it back in two years, it would be $23 per manor per month, would be the additional cost. But again, please understand, we're looking at ways of reducing some of the programs that we have in place, you know, some like the waistline remediation program, the fumigation program. We're looking at programs in landscape that we may be able to save some money on in terms of using those funds instead to offset some of the costs of insurance and the offset the cost of paying back the disaster fund. So, we're not just looking at the disaster fund by itself as something that will automatically be charged to the residents. We're looking at other ways to offset costs by looking at existing programs and what we can maybe stretch out a little longer so that we can move some money around within the operating budget.
We have a question from Marie Fitzgerald. The question is, "Give a practical example of expected reimbursement that would take place under the new policy should my property be destroyed. For demonstration purposes, let's assume my property is valued at $400,000."
Okay. It's a very good question. I'd be happy to try to answer it. Let me start by saying, your property value is what you're talking about. That's the cost of what you think you would get for your property if you sold your property. That's one value. That's not the value we use for insurance purposes. When we talk about replacement value for insurance purposes, we're talking about what the cost would be per square foot to rebuild the unit. And that's very, very different from what somebody might be able to sell their unit for. So, if your unit, based on, let's suppose it was 1,000 square feet, let's make it easy, it was 1,000 square feet, the current replacement cost is $234 per square foot. So, that would cost $234,000 to replace your unit. So, you ask, how would that work in terms of reimbursement? It would work as follows. If your unit was destroyed in a fire, and yours was the only unit destroyed, we would then put in our claim for insurance. We would pay the deductible, in which case it would be $25,000 would come out of our budget, and the insurance company would pick up the additional cost for the rebuilding of the unit. Up to, not up to, but since it's way below the $700 million that we have in insurance, if a single unit like yours burned or was destroyed, it would be fully replaced. There would be no issue of reimbursement in that sense. I hope that answers the question.
Doris Silva has another question through the chat. The question is, "Seeking clarification, a yes vote will provide more flexibility for the Board to better lead decisions to reduce cost. Also, is there a cap on existing owner HOA? And is there a possibility, if not already in place, increase new owners' HOA moving forward?"
I'm sorry, Grant. I understood the first part, but I did not understand. It might be because of the mask. I wasn't able to understand the second part of what she was asking. So, if you could please repeat it. After she said that it would give the Board more flexibility if the amendment is passed, and then she raised some question.
Also, is there a cap on existing owner HOA? And is there a possibility, if not already in place, increase new owners' HOA moving forward?
So, if I'm hearing it correctly or interpreting it correctly, what she's asking is, can we cap, if you're an existing homeowner, that we cap it, cap your monthly HOA fee, and that if you become a new homeowner, if you're purchasing now, you would have a higher HOA fee? Is that, that sounds like what I'm hearing. The answer is no, we couldn't possibly do that. The way the CCNRs and the bylaws are structured, everybody pays the same. You can't charge new people more just because they're recent residents or new residents compared to older residents. That's just not something that would be possible legally.
She states, yes, correct. I currently do not see any other questions asked by residents. If you have a question to ask or you wish to speak to the Board, you may do so at this time.
All right. I want to read it one, I'm going to do a repeat on one question. According to Article 14, the CCNRs have the eligible mortgage holders been notified of these intended changes to Third Mutual CCNRs, and are ballots being sent to all such holders? All appropriate stakeholders are included in the voting process. It is being conducted exactly as it was last year. Regarding, another question. Regarding common area, if a fire, what is the definition of reasonable cost? Like, for example, $50 per tree, the new sapling? There is no specific value placed on any of the almost 14,000 trees in Third Mutual. If we suffered a large loss that included numerous trees, my best guess is that arborists would be employed to determine just how many trees are replaced and the best locations for the new trees.
We have another question from Susan Smallwood. The question is, question for Robert, "Losing maintenance programs is not acceptable as we have so many residents who have been dealing with constant plumbing leaks or flooding. Termites are destructive. Landscaping is now getting better. We need the level of maintenance to keep this 55-plus community at the level of being the place to be according to representations by outside advertising."
That's a very fair statement from Ms. Smallwood, and please understand, Ms. Smallwood, the Board is not interested in doing any harm to the village in terms of its level of maintenance. What we're talking about when we, for example, when we talk about waistline remediation, the cost of waistline remediation is very, very expensive and something that we do want to do for all of Third Mutual. However, the question becomes, at what rate do we do that waistline remediation? We now have a new tool that has been purchased by the maintenance department that allows us, for example, to use the word rota ruta, rota ruta, all the pipes from the top of a Garden Villa building all the way down to the garage. And that can buy us some additional time that we don't have to necessarily do the waistline remediation right away as we were currently doing, and we can slow that process down. We're not talking about stopping any of these programs or terminating any of these programs. What we're talking about is kind of cherry picking where we can stretch out some of these programs a little bit more so that we can save some money in the short run to help offset the cost of insurance. But no way do we intend to do any harm in terms of the current maintenance programs or the landscaping in the village. Thank you.
Ms. Doris Silva also put in a comment that says, "And vote yes is best."
We thank her for that endorsement.
Yes, thanks for her support. We appreciate that. Anybody else, Grant?
At this time, I do not see anybody raising their hand to speak or putting a question in the chat. I just got a question from Marie Fitzgerald. It says, "What is the cost of each manor if we vote this in?" Sorry, let me rephrase. What is the cost to each manor if we vote this in?
At this point in time, we cannot give you a dollar figure for that. First of all, we do not have the quotes from our insurance company. Our renewal is October 1, and no insurance companies will give us quotes today about what insurance cost may be for an October 1 renewal. In fact, some of the insurance companies out there now are telling us that when they do give us a quote, the quote will only be good for a two-week window because they're reassessing as we move further and further into the wildfire season here in California. The insurance companies are playing it much closer to the vest in terms of what kinds of quotes they're willing to give in advance of the insurance date. So, we do not know at all what the cost of insurance will be at this time. So, it's impossible for us to tell you or anybody what the monthly assessment would be or the increase would be. We're also, until we have finished looking at all the different programs, as we just told Ms. Smallwood in her previous question, until we look at all of those kinds of things and see what money we can shave or save in some of those areas, we don't have an answer. I wish we did. It'd be a lot easier for us to give you a straight dollar figure, but at this moment in time, we just don't have that information.
Ms. Marie Fitzgerald says, "So, it could amount to $93 for less coverage if we pass this. What more would that $93 for the new policy give us? It sounds to me like we lose no matter which way we go."
Well, I don't, I don't think that's really the case. If we are able to have some greater flexibility in the kind of insurance coverage that we try to obtain, we still plan to obtain as much as we can possibly afford. If we can keep the $700 million, if we can even increase it to 800 million, 900 million, we would definitely like to do that. It's all going to be dependent upon what the cost is of the insurance. Also, people need to understand that Davis Sterling, the reason $93 is the number that's being tossed around all the time, is Davis Sterling only allows us to increase the assessment a maximum of 20% in any given year. And if you, how did we arrive at the $93? Well, most of us in Third Mutual, the monthly assessment is currently $672. Of that $672 per manor per month, $204 of that is the assessment for GRF. That's money goes directly to GRF to underwrite all of the amenities. So, if you take the $672 and you minus the $204 per manor per month that goes to GRF, that leaves us with $468 as the actual assessment for Third Mutual. 20% of that $468 is $93. So, that's where the $93 maximum comes from. And the reason we use that is because that's the maximum we can raise it, even if our costs go up more than that. So, that's why the $93. But we're hoping that we can keep that cost considerably lower than the $93 per manor. Remember, folks, any cost we pass on to you, we as Board members, as owners, also pay that same cost. So, we're trying just as hard to protect our own interest as we are your interest.
Director Dodson wants to give a statement.
I just wanted to say that if we, if we do not vote for this, for this change, we will definitely face the maximum, because we will have to cover for 100%. What we're trying to do with this initiative is to be able to lower the coverage from 100% to whatever amount we can afford without raising more than $93. Worst-case scenario, your fees are going up $93 in Janu, it'll be January of 2022, with, that's when we change the HOA dues. So, we have no flexibility. Right now, the way things are, we have zero flexibility in purchasing our insurance. We have to get 100% coverage for our community. Please vote yes so that we have flexibility to try to negotiate a different amount so that we can try to mitigate these increases. That's what we're all trying to do here. We live here. We're paying these, you know, we have, I mean, I'm not looking forward to paying more money for insurance. I'm just like all of you. So, but if we don't pass this, we have no flexibility. If we pass this, we have flexibility in perhaps mitigating the amount of our increases. So, I hope that, that's kind of like after I've listened to all these questions, that's what I'd like to say to everybody that's listening right now, is please help us help you. Thank you.
Marie Fitzgerald says, "Thank you for your clarifications." We have Judith Hurst, who wishes to speak. I'll move into panelists right now.
Good morning, Judith. Are you there? Judith, you need to unmute yourself.
Anybody else, Grant?
Sorry. Okay. How much, how, first of all, did you get my email question?
We got lots of emails. Can you state your question, Judith?
Okay. I'll, I'll, I'll repeat my email questions later. What is the difference for the, for the members between what the cost would be with the new language, replacing the word replacement value with your new wording? What's the difference in dollars or percentage, or both?
Ms. Hurst, we can't answer that question. And the reason we can't answer that question is, we do not know what the cost of insurance is going to be come October 1. We have, at this moment in time, we have no idea, except that we do know that the insurance is going up 20 to 30% in terms of the cost. So, we, I'm sorry, I, we, we just don't know the answer to your question.
How can we vote on something that we don't know? Because if we're voting for this change, and what that means is we're, we're going to pay more anyway, but we're going to get less because there's going to be less money to, to replace under your, than the new wording.
We don't know that.
That'd be a percentage. Would you suggest this? You must know that there will be a lowering of the premium. I mean, you wouldn't be suggesting that.
I'm sorry. Could you repeat your last statement? Did you suggest that there'd be a lowering of the premium?
No. My question is, why each, why are you asking the members to vote on the change of this wording from what is currently in the CCNRs, which is replacement value, to another word that is reasonable replacement value or something to that effect?
The reason is that, first of all, for example, this year, we are valued at $1.6 billion. We would have liked to have purchased $1.6 billion of insurance so that we would have full replacement cost if we were to have a complete disaster. However, the broker, Beecher Carlson, that we were using, was unable to obtain $1.6 billion. We could only get $700 million in coverage. So, we took the $700 million we could get, even though we're valued at 1.6 for replacement cost. So, right now, even under the current rule of 100% replacement that you're referring So right now, even under the current rule of 100% replacement that you're referring to, which is in the CCNRs, you know, we are unable to get $1.6 billion. So we changed brokers. We went now with a broker by the name of A.J. Gallagher. A.J. Gallagher is the third-largest broker, insurance broker, in the United States. They have offices worldwide. They also are the agent that has been able to get the insurance for Rossmore up by San Francisco, which has approximately the same size, number of units that Third Mutual has. It's also in a wildfire area. It's also Fram and Stucco and approximately the same age as us. And they were able to get $1.2 billion in coverage for Rossmore. So we switched to A.J. Gallagher with the expectation that they would be able to obtain a larger amount of insurance for Third. Now the question becomes, how much will that insurance cost? If we can buy more insurance, we would be more than happy to buy a greater amount of insurance. We're not suggesting that we want to drastically lower the amount of insurance that we have, but we need to figure out what we can actually afford and what kind of cost is going to be passed on to the members. It's all a balancing act, and right now, that's what we're trying to do, is juggle and balance all the different factors to get to the end line, which is as maximum amount of coverage that we can have, that we can afford, and also passing on the least amount of increased assessment to the members. If you're uncomfortable with this, then I understand that, why you would vote against this. But please understand, even if you vote against this and we maintain the 100% requirement replacement in the CCNRs, it still may not be available to us to purchase, just like it wasn't available this year. So yeah, we're in a rock and a hard place. We understand that, and we understand what we're asking you to do, is to have some faith and support us as we move forward in trying to do what's right and best for the members of Third Mutual. But if you don't think that's the right way to go, then I understand why you would vote no.
We have a question from Jim Barton. The question is, what are the odds that a major loss would be covered by 40% replacement cost times two PML insurance?
That's a very good question. The PML, the probable maximum loss, that is a term that is used to try to predict what the maximum loss would be on any single incident in Third Mutual over the course of the next year. The figure that has been arrived at by an independent company is that the probable maximum loss for Third Mutual would be $145 million. That was the figure that was derived last year that we used as we went forward in terms of purchasing insurance. So if you think that in any single incident, the probable maximum loss could be $145 million, if we did take just 40% coverage of the 1.6 billion, right, that would be in the neighborhood of half a billion dollars of insurance. I'm guessing roughly what 40% of 1.6 is, roughly half a billion dollars, okay? If it's half a billion dollars of insurance and the probable maximum loss is $145 million, we would definitely be covered if we went that direction. However, the board is not looking at a 40%. The board is still looking at providing the maximum coverage. Understand that $145 million is per incident. And the way the insurance works, the property insurance works for us, is if we had one incident today where a couple of Garden Villa buildings burned down, each Garden Villa building is estimated to be about $6 million and change to replace. So if you had three Garden Villa buildings burned down at the same time, that would be $18 million approximately. We would pay the deductible, the $25,000. The insurance company would pay the balance. We would rebuild the three villas. If a week later, we had three more Garden Villa buildings burned down, that would be another $18 million. That would be a separate incident. So it would be payable again. The insurance is not in aggregate. The insurance is per incident each time up to $700 million. So we'd be well-covered if we had those kinds of incidents. I hope that answers the question.
We have Rosemary Quinn who wishes to speak. I'll bring her into panelist.
I just wanted to thank Robert for the more complicated, but very complete answer. And I also wanted to thank Debbie for the very plain word that everybody should understand. We're going to get it anyway, but what the board's trying to do is to make our increase as little as possible. Thank you.
No, thank you, Ms. Quinn. Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
We have another question from Steve Dimostico. The question is, I believe the whole issue here is that even with 700 million of insurance, most everybody here would be able to replace every unit is a disaster. The only reason to have full replacement coverage on 1.6 million of value is if the community were to be hit by a meteor, correct?
Well, I don't, if we were hit by a meteor, that probably would devastate the whole Third Mutual. So at that point, we probably wouldn't be worried anymore. But thank you. Yeah, listen, we understand that we want to have as much coverage as possible so that everybody can sleep peacefully at night, knowing that their investment is well-protected. However, please understand, people also need to have an HO6 policy. And we can't emphasize enough that having an HO6 policy as a backup is very, very important to each and every owner. Whether you have a mortgage or not, an HO6 policy is very, very useful, especially if you have in your manner any square foot additions. Let's say you put on a back room or a front room or something of that nature. If you upgraded, remember, these units are all 50 years old. So in almost every instance, the bathrooms have been upgraded, the showers, the toilets, the sinks, the flooring has been upgraded, the kitchens have been upgraded. And if all of that has been upgraded, that then is all your responsibility as an owner. We will rebuild back to the original square footage that you had when the unit was first built 50 years ago. All right? Anything addition in terms of square footage and any upgrades are all your responsibility. So you need to have an HO6 policy that will cover the rebuild of the interior of the unit and whatever additional square footage that you had added to the unit if you want your unit back to the way it was just prior to the fire. So you need an HO6 policy. You also need two elements in that HO6 policy that I'd like to point out, that I think everybody should talk to their insurance agent about. Number one is loss of use. If your unit was to be destroyed for whatever reason, it would take time to rebuild that unit. During the time that you would not be able to live in your unit, you would need your money from your HO6 policy to provide you with living expenses for you to reside elsewhere while your unit was being rebuilt. Also, please understand that while you are not living in your unit, for whatever reason, if the fact that it's destroyed doesn't make a difference, you are still responsible for the monthly HOA fee that you still have to pay. So please, talk to your insurance agent about loss of use as a component of your insurance policy. The other thing that you want to talk to your insurance agent about is a special assessment clause. If for some reason we had a devastating loss that was greater than what we are currently insured for, it would be, there would be that special assessment that has been talked about. Well, if you have in your insurance policy coverage for that special assessment, that's where the money would come from. If we had to go to each resident and say, okay, you need to pay an additional $16,000, $20,000, whatever the dollar amount is, that's where your HO6 policy could come into play. So I please, I urge you, if you don't have an HO6 policy, please get one. And if you have one, please talk to your insurance agent and make sure that you're covered for both of those kinds of issues, as well as being sure to be covered for whatever the cost of replacement of your interior would be and your personal possessions.
Judith Hurst wishes to speak. I'll move her to panelist.
She's muted. Do you, she's still muted, Grant.
No.
No, but Robert's going to answer. How are we doing for time, Grant?
We got 10.9.
Okay.
Ms. Hurst, you need to unmute, please.
While we're waiting for, oh, sorry. While we're waiting for Ms. Hurst to unmute herself, we are coming close to the end of this town hall meeting. I would like to ask the directors present on this town hall, if you have a brief comment that you'd like to make. Again, we're coming very close to the end, so if you've got a brief comment. Are we, what, we, I'm sorry, I'm confused on the time.
We're stated.
Okay. Okay, my mistake. Judith, are you available? While we're waiting for her, Grant, can we go to the next question?
There is a comment in the chat from Susan Smallwood. The comment is, too much time and money was wasted on the restated CCNRs. That was obviously bad legal advice and put the board in a pickle. I and others would have preferred that you only dealt with this insurance issue. It is my hope in the future that you will work with other residents who are highly respected in the community to help you make these important decisions and not be swayed by bad legal advice. I thank you for this informative town hall, and I hope that we will all have more to bring to residents together for a harmonious community. Thank you for your hard work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smallwood.
Jean Selner would like to speak. I'll now move them to panelist.
Can you hear me?
Yes, Jean. Can you give us your manner number, please?
2119 U.S. Uniform, Via Porta.
Thank you.
I emailed you a list of questions that I haven't, I've heard a couple of responses that were similar questions. Do you plan to respond to the emails that you don't have time to read those questions?
Yes, we've responded to, I've responded to all the emails that were received up until last night. So if you've sent an email today, once we get that email, yes, we will respond to all emails.
So I need to resend that because I sent it yesterday?
Uh, yeah.
I can resend it.
If you would resend it, that would be great because, like I said, I responded to nine more emails last night. So I didn't see yours, but if you resend it, we'll be happy to respond to it. If you'd like to ask your question now, if you'd like to ask your question now, we'd be happy to respond to it right now for you.
There are three pages. So what I would like to know is, we're being assessed, each unit is divided, the amount we're being assessed is divided evenly among all units, not by square footage?
That is correct. That's been the history of this HOA from its very beginning, that all individuals pay an equal share. It has nothing to do with the value of your unit or the square footage of a unit. And we've heard this question raised by a number of people who've said, well, I live in a unit that's only worth $250,000, and I'm paying the same for insurance as the person who lives in the unit that is $1.5 million. And the answer is yes. And I'm in exactly that same position. I don't live in a $1.5 million unit, and I'm paying insurance at the same rate that you are and that everybody else is. And that's the way the HOA has been established, and it's been that way for 50 years. And to change that at this point in time would probably be near impossible.
Hey, I just wanted to verify that my understanding was correct. So my next question is, if there is a loss, to a major loss within the village, is our, would the special assessment, what our insurance does not cover, be based on, we're going to evenly divide that out per unit?
Yes, ma'am. It would be, again, same method holds. It would, if there's a special assessment, it would be equal to every member of the village, of Third Mutual.
And I will resend my questions to you, and I would appreciate a response from the board. And I thank you very much. I know you guys are working hard. And it's unfortunate that you don't have more information. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Selner. Just another point, Ms. Selner, if you'd like to send that email, and anybody else who wants to send an email with questions on insurance, you can send them directly to me. My email is muchnik, M-U-T-C-H-N-I-C-K, at gmail.com. Once again, that's M-U-T-C-H-N-I-C-K, at gmail.com. And if you send it to me, I'll be more than happy to provide you with a response. Thank you.
I will bring Judith Hurst back into the meeting. I want some more to try to have them speak once more.
Judith, you able to unmute, please? Because otherwise, we're going to have to move along. Ms. Hurst, if you could please unmute. Grant, do you have anybody else?
I don't see any questions in chat, and I don't have any people raising their hands wishing to speak. Oh, I have a question from Chong Hao. They say, could you please repeat the email of Muchnik?
Be happy to. My email is muchnik, M-U-T-C-H-N-I-C-K, at gmail.com. My email is muchnick, M-U-T-C-H-N-I-C-K, at gmail dot com. Okay?
So, Grant, while we're waiting for someone else for questions, I'd like to take this opportunity to allow any of the directors that are on to have any comments. If you have some comments related to insurance, would you just raise your hand or unmute yourself and I can see that you're unmuted and you'll be allowed to speak? Okay, doesn't look like we have any, any director comments. Thank you, Director Dobson, for your comments earlier. And while we're waiting for additional people to come in, I can go ahead and read another question that was submitted earlier yesterday. "Is the recent revised property assessment of over $1 billion only for Third Mutual properties or for the entire association? If only for Third, what are the other mutuals doing with regards to insurance?" And Director Muchnick spoke to this earlier, but I'll restate the answer. The evaluation of $1.6 billion is for Third only. The total village is $3.4 billion. United is exploring insurance in concert with GRF. We are no longer partnering with United because we are looking at insurance from two very different perspectives. Is the assessment for only our actual home or for the common areas as well, such as clubhouses, admin buildings, et cetera? The evaluation for Third is only for Third property, homes, streets, streetlights, et cetera. All clubhouses, pools, community centers, golf courses, et cetera, are part of GRF's evaluation. And can we insure our actual home for 100% and the rest of the property, such as clubhouses, for less than 100%? We're only talking about insuring Third property, not GRF property, which includes the clubhouses, the equestrian center, golf courses, tennis courts, pools, and et cetera.
We do have Catherine Freshley who wishes to speak. I will now move them to panelist.
Good morning. I, I wanna thank you all for the work that you've been doing. I know it's been very difficult, but I'm actually supportive of the, of the action you're taking. I think it's been, you know, after a lot of work, at least we've got a minimum set. We've given you, we're trying to give you adequate flexibility. But I think really, because I serve also on the, on the, on the insurance industry for the water industry, may, uh, in California, getting insurance is difficult. But as Bob has said, you know, you're talking about probabilities when you're talking about insurance. And so the board has to very carefully and think through, what is the most, in my opinion, the most probable loss? And, and, and your decisions need to be based more on the most probable loss, not necessarily on the overall value of the total community. Because, as somebody asked or somebody commented, it would take a meteor in order to destroy this whole community at one time. Because we are divided into sections by, by state highways. So the most probable loss, or the most, the highest, the, the, I don't believe the probability of losing all units at the same time even really exists. I think it's such a low probability and that's up to the board to decide. You've got to decide what you're most comfortable with and what makes sense for the community, recognizing that you also have to ensure we have adequate funds to maintain the manners, maintain the sewer systems, so that, because we spend at El Toro a lot of money making sure that the sewer systems are flowing and the water is flowing to you. And the infrastructure is critical. So you've got to make sure you're covering adequate, the infrastructure adequately, as well as then covering the insurance costs. But I appreciate your hard work. I know how hard it can be after having served over nine years on the boards. And I thank you for taking the time to do it. And I appreciate your willingness to have this town hall. Thank you.
Thank you. And I, I agree with you in terms of what the PML is and how we should be looking at insurance. But as you know, and as you've stated previously, right now, our hands are basically tied that we have to have 100% replacement if it's available to us. So we've been locked in, in terms of the insurance that we've had to buy. And now we do wanna look at some kind of multiplier of the PML and make some sense out of that. So thank you very much for your support.
We do have a question from an anonymous attendee. It stated as, would you like me to read the question?
Is it, I'm sorry, anonymous?
It does say anonymous attendee.
Uh, no.
Okay.
Uh, we, we want to hear from residents and it, we just need to have their manor number. Thank you. Let's see, did we do number 15? Okay, we're looking to see if there were any additional questions that were submitted yesterday.
No more questions, Grant?
Also, we confirmed that there are no other email questions at, at this time.
And I would like to extend an invite to the person who called in that was, who wants to be anonymous. If you want the board to address you, we really do want to know your name and your manor number. We, we just typically do not accept comments from anonymous. I don't have any more questions on my...
We'll give folks another couple of minutes.
There's one in the, there is one in there coming on.
He's, he's, Grant's working on it. He, he can see it.
Yeah, we can't see the chat box.
So while we're waiting, I just wanna thank all the, all the residents who took time to type in some email questions and submit them to us on yesterday. So we thank you for that. They're very informative.
We also wanna thank, and some of the residents who assisted us in revising the proposed amendment. When we sent out the original draft of the amendment and gave folks till May 5th at 12 o'clock to respond and give us their comments and suggestions, we got numerous suggestions from members, which we certainly did consider. We took them to the committee, we discussed them. In fact, we had dialogue with a number of residents back and forth in trying to arrive at the current amendment, the way it is, it is drafted. And some of those folks have been very, very helpful in helping to redraft and finalize the wording. And we wanna just say thank you to those folks. We got anything, Grant?
Rosemary Quinn wishes to speak.
I know that, that you all asked for residents to help you on a committee. Were you able to get residents? How many? And what are you asking them to help you with?
Director Jared will speak to that.
Thank you for your question, Rosemary. Uh, we did, we only had two responses from that. Additionally, before our president went on leave for a short while, he, I don't know exactly what he had in mind for a work group. And I was gonna put a work group together, but we only had two people to respond. So we're looking for other ways to get our valid information out there, to help, have people help us vote, help to get the vote out mainly. So that, that's what I have to say to that. But if you have any ideas on that, you can contact me, please.
Ms. Quinn, if you're in support of, of the amendment, any, any friends, any constituents that you have that you're in contact with via email or other ways, if you could reach out to them and elicit their support for the amendment, assuming you're in support of it, that would be wonderful. We really would appreciate that. And everybody else out there who's listening, if you have people that, if you're in support of the amendment, we would appreciate any, any opportunity you have to share that support and call for support with people you know in the community. So thank you.
All right, Doris Silva would like to, or Silva would like to speak. I will move her to panelist.
Good morning, Doris.
Hello, good morning. Yes, good morning. I just thought it would be easier for me to just seek clarification on this and it may be directed to Mr. Much, Muchnick. When we were talking about PML and those predictions, you had mentioned some figures. Our current Third HOA is 672 minus the 204 GRF. I'm just gonna label it fees that we pay GRF for the facilities, et cetera. Do I understand that correctly?
Yes, you do.
Okay. And pardon me because I'm, I'm a new owner, so I'm just trying to understand. So with that, when I think about our assessment of my living space, per se, it would be 468 would be that bottom line number that we're paying. I don't know if my logic makes sense, but I'm looking at it this way. So my HOA is 468 and from that 468, when I look at this number this way, it seems a lot lower than I initially understood it when I looked at the 672. Because that 204 covers my ability to go to the pools, to, you know, use the golfing areas, to walk in the community, right? Or any activities that I participate in. So the possible, well, let me rephrase that. The increase, while it may not be the $92 or $93 we were talking about, I mean, that's the highest it would be that would go into effect in January.
That's correct. So far, your numbers, so far, your numbers are all correct and your thinking is correct.
Oh, so, yeah, so I was, I was trying to break it down for myself, being that I'm a younger new owner and I'm thinking, okay, long term, what, what is the benefit? Because I do recall someone saying something about, what are we gonna get out of it? And I think our mindset, at least my mindset is, I'm already getting a lot out of it because if I'm paying $204 out of my assessment to be able to go to Clubhouse 4, Clubhouse 2, Clubhouse 7, the library, the, the mail services, or get on the bus to go over to Trader Joe's and not use my vehicle, I, I think I need to change my perspective, how I'm looking at these numbers. So thank you for clarifying that. And I do feel strongly that if we do vote yes, that it will benefit us greatly. So thank you for that.
No, thank you very much. I don't wanna rain on your parade, Ms. Silva, but also understand that the $204 per manor per month that GRF charges, that we pay directly to GRF on your behalf when you send in your monthly HOA, they have the opportunity to also raise that $204, the 20%. So keep in mind that we don't have any control over what GRF does in terms of raising its assessment, and that could be passed on as well. So I, I, again, I don't wanna rain on your parade in terms of the way you were looking at things. I think you're looking at it the correct way, but I just wanna be open and honest that they have the opportunity to raise their assessment as well.
Marie Fitzgerald has a comment, their comment saying that they had submitted the question that was previously anonymous. Their comment is, "My comment was that the thought comes about the little town of Paradise, which also thought the likelihood of total destruction was next to nothing. With the wildlands next to us, to the west, we thank you for this extra effort because our threat is not zero. The likelihood of damage to us is great with that wildland next to us. We thank you for working so hard on this, taking the time to clarify, and hope us to protect ourselves and our community."
Thank you, Ms. Fitzgerald. Appreciate that. Thank you very much.
You know, we're running, almost running out of time, but before we leave, I wanna make a, a comment myself. I wanna thank Robert Muchnick for all the work he's doing. He came on this board, he started studying insurance, and I am telling you, this man has really put his heart and soul in learning everything about our finances. I mean, he became the treasurer, he's an M and C chair, now he's insurance guru for us. I mean, it's just incredible. So I wanna thank you and hope that all of you out there will thank you because he's trying so hard to keep our assessments as low as possible because it, it affects each and every one of us as well. So just in the last short period of time, Annie and I have taken on a role as trying to be his backup. We're just learning as much as we can from him because he's so knowledgeable. And heaven forbid if he gets hit by a Mack truck or something, we're gonna be doomed. So we're learning and, and learning from Robert. But I just wanna thank him and thank him, in fact, behalf of the board and the community for all the work he's put into this insurance for, for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for all the support and help you've provided. Thank you.
Robert, don't go out of the house, please. We don't want you getting hit by a bus. Thank you.
Any final member comments?
Director Karimi has a comment.
Ah, Director Karimi. Okay, unmute, okay, go ahead, Director Karimi.
I just wanna say that this is one of the better town hall meetings that I was involved.
Thank you.
Rosemary Quinn also has a comment. I will move them to panelist.
Can you hear me? Hello?
We hear you, Reza.
Oh, okay, because I think Grant was talking. I didn't know that, well, yes, you could. Hello?
Yes, go ahead, we can hear you.
Hello?
Go ahead, Reza.
Okay. All right, thank you. I just wanna mention that all of these efforts that we're putting in this insurance issue comes down to your votes. We need your votes. 67% of the community have to vote yes in order for us, for this board to be able to move forward. So have that in mind, all of your support, make sure that you spread the word with your neighbors. with your neighbors and all the other members. The vote has to be at least 67% of the community to say yes for us to be able to move forward. And thank you for your participation and your support for the board. That's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Kareemee.
Rosemary Quinn.
Robert, I was feeling good until you truthfully alerted us to the GRF possibility of increases. Can you guide us on what's the best way to monitor and question them so that we keep their share as low as possible?
Well, I felt the need just to, you know, I didn't want Ms. Silva to be misled in thinking that all that could be raised was the Third Mutual assessment part. But the way for you and other members to do and have influence and pay attention to what's going on with GRF is to attend the GRF meetings. GRF has their monthly board meetings. They have a finance committee meeting that is also open to the members to attend and to participate in. So I would urge you to do the same things in terms of monitoring what GRF is doing, the same way that many of you monitor what Third is doing. You have just as much a vested interest in what GRF does as you do Third. So I would urge you, Ms. Quinn and others, to get involved with GRF as well. Thank you.
Are there any other member comments, Grant?
I do not see any other member comments in the chat or hands raised.
Okay. So we're going to go ahead and wrap it up. I just want to extend a final opportunity for any other board directors for any final comments. Okay, Director Dodson?
I just want to make one more comment before we go. And it's to Reza's point. We have to get the vote out there. We have 59 submutuals. We have to get 67% yes to make this change happen. So please tell, if you're in favor of this, please let everyone you know know and make sure that you vote so that we get to the percentages. Because if we don't get to the percentages, all of this is for naught. And I just urge you, please, please vote and vote yes, because this is the best chance we have. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Dodson. Director Bada?
Good morning, everybody. I would like to echo what Debbie and the rest of you are talking about. It's very important that we all vote and get a positive result of this. The most important thing is to be able to reduce the 100% requirement to a reasonable number. That is the crux of this election. So change it because we need that change. Please go out and vote. Tell your neighbors that they need to vote and get it done. We need that 67% that we are talking about. So definitely voting is not a option. I mean, it is, I think, very important you do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Bada. Director Ingal?
I think we had some good questions today. And good questions, cry for good answers. And I think Robert Mutchnik did an excellent job of that and anybody else that contributed. And we do want to urge you again to vote and untie our hands so that we can, we can help you. Thank you.
Do you have any comments?
Yeah, I'd like to make a final comment. First of all, I want to thank everybody who called in or sent an email in and let you know that I also look forward to receiving any emails that you still may have that you want to send regarding insurance. I want to just, since I've been kind of the numbers person, I want to share with you numbers in terms of what's required with the vote. Our CCNRs require that to make a change in the CCNRs, we must receive a yes vote from 67% of the owners. We have 6,102 owners. Therefore, we need approximately 2/3 of that, which is just about 4,000 people have to vote yes. If just 4,000 people vote and a number of them vote no, it will not pass. So we need 4,000 yes votes for this amendment to be approved. So it is extreme, as the other directors pointed out, it's extremely important for everyone to vote. Last time, regardless of how you felt about the ballot, 37% of the people, owners, did not cast a ballot. So the proposal last year was dead in the water before any votes were even counted because we only had 63% of the people casting ballots. So there was absolutely no way that that previous proposal would have passed. We don't want to be in the same situation this time. So please understand how critical it is that for everybody to actually cast a ballot. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Mutchnik. Any final comments from you, Director Jared? Well, I just want to echo what everybody else has said about the ballot and the initiative and the vote. I want to also thank everybody for tuning in today to listen to this town hall meeting. Just as a reminder, we have another final town hall meeting that's scheduled for June 7th at 9:30 a.m. And it will be a town hall meeting format as well. And so, and I also want to thank staff for working with us today. We had some technical difficulties in the beginning. They were able to get it worked out and we much appreciate that. So on behalf of Third Mutual directors, thank you all for joining with us today. We encourage you to continue to submit your questions to us. And have a wonderful day. Thank you.